No matter how you do it, it's twenty-three minutes.
I want to call the meeting order for the public hearing. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Alcorn, here. Dr. Lynch?
Here.
Mr. Merbow?
Here.
Mrs. Taliani?
Here.
Mr. Ferrari?
Here.
Mr. Sparks? Mr. Sarver?
Here. We have the public hearing for the playground sidewalk repairs. The purpose of this hearing is to determine and affirm the need to undertake repairs for the sidewalks and playing surfaces at the tennis courts located at the LP Sports Complex and affirm that health, life, safety funds are the only designated financial resources available and that all A priority projects in our ten-year health, life, safety plan survey have been completed. Finally, this hearing will offer any member of the public an opportunity to ask questions or comments. First of all, I open the hearing up to the board for discussion. Are there any comments?
And then so what I would like to do then is affirm that after a review of our ten-year health, life, safety survey, that we have completed all of the A prioritized, ABCs, all the As have been have been completed and that because of the nature of the repairs, tripping hazards that are, we're not having to contend with at the tennis courts, that we are in need of a repair and restoration and that I'm affirming as well that the only designated financial resources available would be our health, life, safety.
Does anyone from the public have any comments or ask questions? All right, so there are no questions. I need a motion to recess the hearing.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Merbow?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yeah.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I call the order of regular board meeting for February fifteenth. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yeah.
Dr. Lynch?
Here.
Mr. Merbow?
Here.
Mrs. Taliani?
Here.
Mr. Ferrari?
Here.
Mr. Sparks? Mr. Sarver?
Here. Please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like you to look over the minutes for the January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three regular board meeting. There's no additions or corrections. Any in motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yeah.
Mr. Merbow?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Tonight, under recognition and comments from visitors, we have our division spotlight, the CTE Division, and we have Mr. Matt Lee here. The floor is yours, Matt.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Matt Lee. I teach the machine shop program for the Area Career Center in LP High School, and it's been recently here that we've been the fortunate recipient of a rather large donation from a Mr. Tom Kowalski who was class of nineteen-fifty-seven here at the school. So up until now, those are my slides here, we got the milling machines up until January. January is when the new machines got moved in. So on the left, picture of the chauvinier mills, which when I took over the program from Mr. Weber in two thousand and nine were in place. And on the picture on the right, Southwest Industries mills.
They were donated to the program in twenty-eighteen. Those were brought into the program through Southwest Industries. The owner of that company donates a million dollars a year worth of machinery into educational programs around the United States. So that afforded us the ability to conversationally program and UCNC-controlled machines. Moving day was January fifth, which also was the first day of school with students back, so rather hectic first day back. Rigging services were provided by Onsite, which is one of the companies run by machinery maintenance up on three fifty-one here in La Salle. So they came in, moved the machines in for us. Those are the machines as they are in place. On the left is a mini-mill. On the center picture is a VF-two, and on the right is the mini-mill and a TL-one lathe, which was in the shop when I took over, and we use on a daily basis. It's another Haas machine, so it's eighteen, nineteen years old now. So we formed a machining cell by putting those two machines, so the doors face each other. View of the shop and how the Haas machines are positioned, you can see this is up from near the bottom of the stairways on the left, on the right, it's back by the back door of the shop, and that's the VF-two there to the right, and further up the way, we have manual lathes all through the center of the shop. So why did I choose Haas? When it came to getting the bids and deciding what to go with, well, Haas currently has over two hundred and fifteen thousand machines in industry all over the world. Many of our local machine shops in the area all run Haas or a variety of machines. Haas is used extensively in the CNC programs at schools, university and technical colleges all over the United States. They have a robust series of videos on YouTube that covers a lot of G-code programming and the operation of the mills. If you need an answer for how they'd find something on a Haas, YouTube has it. So the other issue is the Haas controller does not change between machines, and that means either mills or lathes. It is a, they're on their third generation of software. They have not changed the control panel in over thirty years. So a student of mine that learns how to run one Haas machine can walk out and into industry and run every Haas machine. Now, different programming styles may happen, but the control panels are the same. The buttons are in the same place. Everything's the same when it comes to Haas. They don't change things and they don't move things around. So, and they have an online certificate program that is free of charge for students to be able to work their way through. So Haas was, the other company I gave consideration to was Southwest Industries, because in twenty-eighteen they did donate what was the equivalent of fifty-three thousand dollars worth of machines to the program. Unfortunately, their machines are not out in industry. They are conversational mills, so I wanted something we can move the students into full G-code programming. The mills came equipped with a Renishaw probing system. It sets work offs, has tool lengths, checks for tool breakage, and can be used for tolerance checks. There's a video embedded in this, I think. So that's the Haas controller.
That's the Renishaw probe over a block of plastic in the vise. What that's going to do is that's going to come in, it probes for the Z, the top of the Z, and then it measures each side of the X axis, and it does the calculation for you for where the center point of that position is. Then it will go and pick up our Y offsets. And now, it's now entered that into a work position in the machine, so it knows exactly where the center of that block's at. Moving forward. A simple, quick four-tool program I wrote for demonstration is embedded in this slide. If you could play that for me.
You got it.
So this is, this was a program me and a student worked on.
Go ahead.
And what happens here is we bring in an end mill.
Moves over the side of the part. It's going to circle and interpolate. That means make a circle in the plastic. It cuts into the plastic. The machine's been told what diameter that tool is. I told it I want a two-inch circle directly in the center of that block, so it figures all that map, all that geometry, all that stuff that goes into that, and it raises up, and now we told it we want a one-inch circle deeper to the inside, directly in the center. Comes up, this machine has a twenty-tool carousel on it, so here we pull up our center drill, which happens to be tool one, comes in, it's going to, we're going to drill our center drill four quarters of the part. It comes up. Now we're going to pull up a drill bit. It happens to be a number seven drill bit, which is a two oh one diameter drill bit. It's the drill bit you need to tap a quarter twenty thread. The machine doesn't know that. That's something we have to know in the shop. So it goes in and it drills all those holes, I think half an inch or deeper. I don't remember what we put that in. And finally, so it's all positioned every time. This is a repeatable technology. We set a stop, we can make hundreds and hundreds of these if we wanted to. Up to what are grade of our tooling is, yeah. I can do stainless. If you want to get into like ink and aluminum titanium, might be stretching it. Here, we're tapping, we're threading the holes and putting quarter twenty threads in the four holes. It's just a part we came up with. That's the end of that video. And this last, on the left is another video, and it's just a quick little shot of what G-code is actually doing for us in the shop. And so that could, yep, that control structure is called G-code programming, and here's where we hit the cycle start. And as that runs through, it reads each line of the programming, and that tells the machine the specific thing to do through the use of GMs, your X, Y, and Z. There's an F in there for feed rate, that kind of thing. It's a short little video. But that's what G-code programming is. So students that are going to be able to learn how to G-code program will be able to command this machine.
You can code in and upload, you do directly on the machine?
We can do coding on a simple notepad and then save it as an NC file, take it to the machine on a USB stick, put it in the machine and run it. So every student will be able to code on their own device, because it only takes notepad to be able to run. Yeah, if it has notepad, yeah. Yep, we'll be able to run it, we'll be able to code on just notepad. Doesn't even require a word, because you have to be able to save it as an NC file. And then on the right is a picture of the plastic block that was made in the other video. The other piece of equipment that Mr. Kowalski was kind enough to donate, and he saw it in operation at a technical school in Colorado, was the plastic injection molding machine on the left. That's a video. We may not play the whole thing, but, yeah. Plastic injection molding machine, this is a machine that melts plastic in a bin, the hopper, the white hopper that's up there. It puts it, it reheats, it heats to about four hundred degrees. It's going to melt the plastic, and then what it does is it puts pressure on two plates together that are a mold, and at six thousand PSI of the pressure, it forces that plastic into the mold. And whatever you make the mold on, the mold of, it's clamping, it's closed right there with that, near where that yellow wire's at, closes that up, and then it ejects hot liquid plastic into a mold. We're able to, being in the machine shop, we'll be able to make our own molds. They have to be made out of aluminum, so we'll be able to machine our own molds and then put them in this machine and be able to do plastic injection molded parts. It retracts itself apart, and there's going to be a part in there. You can stop the video there. That's... On the picture on the right is some of the plastic pieces, and that was what the machine was sent with from, built in Ohio. On the left is a blank set of molds, and then me and a student programmed and made the mold that's on the bottom right corner of the aluminum plates. That way we have a, rather than, unfortunately, the cost of a blank set of molds is three hundred and seventy-five dollars, so we took a piece of one inch by six aluminum and we copied what was there, and we made our own, so we have drop-in mold ability now. We'll be able to take simple half-inch thick four-by-four plates and make our own pieces and drop them in and then make coasters, key tags, stuff like that. Small. It's limited in size, but it'll do what we want. So we'll be able to make our own molds and then utilize it on the machine for prototyping or just pumping out a bunch of LP coasters eventually or something like that.
Do that.
Plastic injection molding.
Yeah.
I mean, they make ones you can crawl inside of, but if you, if anybody ever up on I-55 and going through Bowling Brook, if you look on the left side of the road, the WeatherTech Company has a building. Those are all, those are all, those are all plastic injection molding machines, and that's how they make the floor mats for WeatherTech. And they have a mold made, they inject that plastic in there, it closes up, and you got WeatherTech floor mats and all the stuff that they sell. But that building is full of plastic injection molding machines.
They could be as big as, you know, a truck.
And they, sometimes some of the molds I've seen, they get lifted into place with overhead cranes to drop them into the machines. This is a much smaller piece of equipment than that.
If a kid goes in and works at WeatherTech and they're using this type of technology... Right, he'll understand, he'll understand the melting, the, yeah. The pressures involved, yeah. You put six thousand pounds of...
Pressure on two plates pushed together, it's, stuff's not going to squeeze out. There is a plastic door there that has to be closed door for that to run, so you can't accidentally get your finger in it. So that's the end of my presentation. If anybody has any more questions, more than... All right.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Exciting times.
What's that?
Exciting times.
Very exciting.
Yeah, that's cool.
I finally get to see what my husband's been talking about you for years.
Thank you.
I finally get to see how a machine works that my husband kept talking to me.
Well, wow, yeah, yeah. I used to work with Ms. Alcorn's husband, and he was my original group leader, champion, when I started in ninety-nine. You could have come over any time, we would have shown you around the dirty machine shop. Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
All right, let's turn to finance. Oh, sorry, it's a public comment. Are there any public comments? Okay, sorry. You know, that's my favorite part. All right, finance. Any motion to approve the bills for South Patonshire High School?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Merbow?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Need a motion to approve the bills for the LP Area Career Center?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Merbow?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Need a motion to approve the payroll report?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yeah.
Mr. Merbow?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion to approve the financial records?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Merbow?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yeah.
Dr. Lynch?
Yeah.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Under correspondence, we have a thank you letter from Ms. Cheryl DePape for the LP Board of Education donations to the LP Educational Foundation in memory of Mrs. Edith McGun, the grandmother of Dr. Stephen Roblesky. We have TIF reimbursement this month from the Village of Tonica, the third and fourth district, of two thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. The City of Ogusby, TIF one, three thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-one cents. TIF six, two hundred and twelve dollars. The City of Peru, the two thousand twenty-one tax year, TIFs are a hundred and two thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-two, sixty-three cents. In the City of La Salle, intergovernment, AGT, TIFs, eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety cents. So this month, our total TIF reimbursement is a hundred and seventeen thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and two cents. All right, on the board reports, Building and Grounds Committee. That would be me. Lucky me. We met on Monday, and we went over a variety of things. Most of them were updates, but we did have a couple of action items. The auto shop renovation phase for the main building and the Dolan Building. Auto shop, excuse me, auto shop and main building. We had one bidder, Coolmaster of La Salle. The auto shop replacement bid was a hundred and sixty-one dollars and nine hundred and twenty-six, a hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. The main building doors replacement project, the alternate bid was forty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars for a total bid project of two hundred and eight thousand, two hundred dollars. Our committee recommends, recommends that. And we asked, since there's only one bidder, we did ask Mike Commits, our architect, if that was within the range, which he thought, and he actually said the bids that he calculated three years ago, and he put on a carrier for three years, and he said it's very much right in line with everything. We talked about the public hearing. We went to a solar energy exploration update, district exploring solar panels for the main building, east building in the ACC wing. Main building roof, nineteen twenty-seven wing, which we're in now, is approximately at the end of its life, twenty years. So that's where we're basically looking to put the panels, but we're still in discussion, so there'll be more updates to the board.
Do we have panels up there already?
No.
No.
On the circulation pumps, updated, Mr. Tomonello said that one of them, and these went out when the paro went out a few weeks back. Both of them went out. We have one replaced. We're waiting for parts for the second one to be replaced. The Haas machine equipment, which we just had a great demonstration was, the installation is complete, but the air pressure regulators are needed. Once the regulators are installed, the air pressure will increase to normal settings, and machines will be fully functioning. Current project updates, the LP Sports Complex Phase Two. Dr. Roblesky, Mike Commits, and Mr. Tomonello met with, you know, the project managers, and the project's on target. Week of the twentieth, Dr. Roblesky, Mr. Kuziel, and Mr. Baker will distribute flyers to homeowners near the sports complex to let them know, you know, what's in the process. We're skipping a couple houses.
Don't skip my house. That's my hood.
February, the week of February twenty-seventh, there'll be a media release for the overview of the project. On March sixth, that'll be an official groundbreaking for the second phase. Very exciting. Nurses' office invitation to bid was issued on the thirteenth. The deadline for bids is the eighth. The auditorium stairwell repairs, they're still waiting for, a team and builder is still waiting for materials. Counseling office wall repairs, the mystery of the moisture. We really have no idea where the moisture's coming from. So Mr. Commits is having Brownfield and Associates come in, and they'll perform additional testing for wall moisture in different sections to try and see what the problem is. So that's ongoing. The Herboshiver Alumni Room, the dedication will be May seventeenth. The ribbon cutting ceremony be held either May nineteenth or twentieth. Dolan Building greeters station, a lot of positive feedback from preliminary designs from the ad hoc committee, and that's in the process of development. The Dolan Building elevator replacements in progress, and the Dolan Building renovation phase two, the final window should be delivered next week. The track resurfacing project update, we have a possibility of five bidders for that in the next coming weeks. The Illinois vendors will come and look at the track and look at the project itself before they bid, and then photos will be sent to the out-of-state firms. We have one from Pennsylvania, one from Florida. So more information next month's meeting. And the last thing, we have, we have an action item for the renewal, for the renewal of intergovernmental agreement with the City of La Salle for usage of Rotary Park for freshman baseball. It was a three percent increase from last year, which is our normal increase each year, so it goes up to a hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-two cents a game, which includes all the setup, all the maintenance, which is a phenomenal price, which, I'll be honest, is a phenomenal price. And that's an action item, and the committee voted three oh to accept. The only other thing we talked about is our scoreboard and message center. We're having some problems with each, so we sent to get some new receivers and try and find some access points to install, and that's still an ongoing, ongoing process. Are there any questions? Finance committee, Mr. Merbow.
Okay, we also met on Monday, and we reviewed the monthly financials. We're fifty-eight point three percent of the way through the year, and we've received eighty-seven point two-two percent of revenues and expense, sixty-three point five-nine percent of expenditures. We also recommended the auto shop renovation phase three, the building door replacement, so our committee also recommends that with the bids that you mentioned. We also recommend, and it's on our agenda, I believe, to approve a swim camp program activity account. We haven't had one in the past, so we're just creating an account for that organization. We also recommend the SR three amendment recommendation regarding the revised SR three amendment, and we recommend approval of that. An action item that's coming up that we voted to approve also was the surty bond recommendation, which is an increase to the superintendent of the treasury, which is needed because of the recent bond issuance. We also talked about the copy machine bid release and recommended that. We talked at length about cafeteria hours and job description reorganization. Superintendent Roblesky gave us an update on that and how it's going and where he thinks that's going to end up. We had a preliminary discussion about the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four insurance rate updates. We do think there's going to be a sizable rate adjustment, but I'll let Dr. Roblesky talk about that when it's time for that to come. So they're still talking and negotiating. We also recommended and agreed with the public hearing on the tennis court, having that go through health, life, safety, and discussed the vendors also with the LP Sports Complex and the resurfacing. Hopefully, we'll have those bids coming this week, as you mentioned. And also, we discussed, the final thing was the solar energy exploration, just the beginning of that and seeing how that would go. So that was our meeting.
Thank you. Administered reports, Superintendent Tennis Court, Dr. Roblesky.
I have a couple of things just to highlight from my report. One is I want to pass this around. This is really, really exciting. So the, I think when you think of LP High School, there's a lot of things to think about. I mean, the facility, the clock tower, the Howard Fellow Stadium, but I think our, our school song is also, I think, is very well-known and is, actually has been in existence since the nineteen thirties, when it was, the score was first written by, when she was a student here, Susan Jane Woods, became Susan Jane Howell, which was class nineteen thirty-four. One of her descendants recently passed away, and in his will, bequeathed to the district, the original score of red and green. the original score of red and green from 1934. Yeah, it's pretty impressive. So Susan Jane Howell, handwritten, you can see some of the changes in here as well. There's kind of a cool news article about her. She actually went on to Illinois Wesleyan and composed one of their songs as well. So what our plan is right now is to get this put into a shadow box that we would then put on display in the soon-to-be-dedicated alumni room. In my thank you letter to Mrs. Terry Howell, I shared with her that I'm going to follow up with her when we do have the dedication, ribbon cutting, and extended invitation to their family, if anyone would like to come and see that. So I want to pass that around for you. I know, yeah, exactly. It is pretty impressive to think that we're only about 11 years away from that being 100, 100 years old. But have a, a very important part of our history is, you know, is really, is really exciting. Of course, anytime you think of red and green, my mind automatically goes to the bump, 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 bump. So we have to figure out where that is in the score. The, we had a recent audit from ISBE on our federal grant, a number of our federal grant programs, as well as our transportation. All of our federal grants were clean, there were no findings. On transportation, we did have three findings. I hope to say, this is the first time in my experience with an audit where there were findings that we're getting money back. So there were some things that we could have included that we did not. So we're going to be getting an additional reimbursement from the state for $19,505 that will go into our transportation fund. So we're very pleased with that. Mr. Cuzil, do you object if I talk with the conference? Very good. So just as an update, we have Plano High School and Sandwich High School are unfortunately leaving the conference, which that's always their district's prerogative to do that. But I guess I want to be on record as saying that the, very upset and disappointed that they are not following the bylaws, which would be provide a two-years notification
They're done this year.
to the district. They're done at the end of this year. So as you can imagine, there's some very, we're frustrated, we're disappointed in their decisions. We know that every school makes decisions based on what their primary needs are, but it's, it just leaves a really bad taste in our mouths. So I just, I want to be on record with that. The remaining six schools, however, which would be LP, Ottawa, Rochelle, Morris, Kalen, and Sycamore, the superintendents had a Zoom meeting. All six of us have affirmed our commitments to each other. And so that was probably the most important thing in that conversation, and the principals and the athletic directors are now having conversations. And so we just expect to have some updates. There's some things that are in the works. So we look forward, though, to getting some final recommendations from those two groups. And then lastly, I had two FOIA requests. Over the last month, we received a request from the Illinois Retired Teachers Association, requesting the names and email addresses of certified staff retiring at the end of this year. We responded in the statutory timeframe for that. And then we received a FOIA request from Local Labs, in which they were seeking information on the names of teachers, their department, their gross pay rate for, from fiscal years 2020 through 2022. And we did approve that request and sent that to them in the statutory timeframe. And we also complied with the teacher's contract, which we have language in there that if there's ever a request for information on members, that we have shared the results of that FOIA request with Mrs. Adams. So I have lesser questions.
Principal's Court, Mrs. Cushing.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, everyone. A few things to highlight out of my report. Administration has been busy with finishing up their final observations of teachers. And so everyone's been busy meeting and watching teachers the last few weeks here, and hopefully we'll have those finished up there by our March deadline. The other thing that we've been busy with is the PLCs, as I highlighted in there. This is our first year of sort of the rejuvenation, and so we have been, you know, busy with staff and administration has been renewing that. So just wanted to let you know, we think those things are going well and making a lot of forward progress there. Something else I wanted to highlight was our harbor homerooms. I know we haven't spent a lot of time talking about that this year, but we have met during first semester, and then we've continued to meet again this semester, continuing to have students lead those groups and meet during their homerooms once a month. And then the last thing I wanted to highlight for you out of my report was that we have high scholarship coming up on the 23rd, and if you're available, we'd love to have you join us. We'll be honoring close to 300 students for their academic accomplishments. So we're back to very much normal. We'll be in the auditorium even. Everything will be truly pre-pandemic style for the celebration. So once again, that's at 7 o'clock, and you are welcome to join us. Does anyone have any questions for me? Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. Just a few things I want to highlight from my report and then a couple of updates. Exciting with some of the things that are going on for athletics, particularly, I'll start with our girls bowling team. Between our last meeting and now, they won the IA Conference Tournament. They won the Dixon Regional. From the time I wrote this report to now, they have finished third at sectionals. So the whole team qualified. They had their state send-off today. They will be competing this weekend for, in the state tournament up in Rockford. Continuing with those updates, in good news, Connor Lorden for wrestling, he won his regional, which was in the report. Since then, he's had his sectional. He finished second at his sectional meet, and he has qualified for the state tournament as well. He had his state send-off today as well, and he is on his way. He will wrestle Thursday, Friday, and Saturday down in Champaign. One last update, we had Kelly Damjanic. She will be the first ever girl wrestler to compete for LP at the state tournament. She is just a freshman. She ended up finishing fourth in her sectional on Saturday, so she's going to be our first representative at that tournament. She'll be wrestling in two weeks on Saturday down at ISU. So we're looking forward to a good weekend here and the following weekend of, a lot of our teams, individuals making it to our state tournaments and great accomplishments by them and their coaches and the hard work they've done.
It was, yeah, great, great news all.
Last weekend coming through on everything, so. And then last, just kind of follow up, we are in talks on a bunch of different options with this IA Conference. Any information I give right now would just kind of be speculative ideas and things, so we'll look forward to giving you those options as we come up and hear things more. Any questions? Excellent, thank you.
Director of the ACC, Mr. Meakin.
Good evening. As you're excited senior report, we wanted to honor our two February students of the month who are Mendota students.
Students in the welding class, Zach Mullins and Logan Farr. Aside from just being exceptional students, they also have pursued their career. They're already working out in the field doing things with local manufacturers, so just extremely proud of what they've accomplished. You know, pat on the back to Mr. Lee. You'll also notice that with the installation of those machines and some handiwork by both Mr. Baker and my assistant, Mrs. Wilke, we've already been reached out to by a local manufacturer, PGI, who saw the machines, said, hey, those are what we use too. Would you like to come up here and see what we do and maybe have them come out here to do a demonstration on what happens? So it's already paying off with the philosophy of getting the kids machinery that's being used out in the field right now. So going forward, we look forward to even more things with that. But in that case, we also add PGI into the list of local companies that have this year come out to partner with us. FBI Buildings, Nucor Machinery Maintenance, and Marquis have also all been out to share their skills and expertise and matters with, so that those relationships keep on building and building. Again, very proud to foster those and have those continue to increase. You'll see that the ACC and Sharaftee have selected their ROE educators and support person of the year, and we're happy to announce Mrs. Lori Johnson, our early education teacher, was selected as the teacher, and Mr. Luke Weisen, who's the electrician here for LP, was selected as the support person. Just phenomenal people to work with and doing great things for the ACC. Also, as of last Friday, Representative of Nucor, aside from helping us with, working with the kids with soft skills and things, were here onsite to donate a new computer lab to the ACC, 20 state-of-the-art computers to help. And aside from that, they also availed their IT people to come here and work with the kids in kind of a symposium-type manner to go through the installation, all the things that they do in their job and give them aspects into the IT field that they should look forward to once they graduate. We've been doing tours with our current schools. The current, currently, we're waiting for DePew to come over for a tour. We just got through with Lemoyle last week, and by March 1st, they'll be having their enrollment numbers to us for sectioning to happen that following week. And then lastly, want to thank Mr. Walt Sukowski, our district legal counsel for putting together the outline of what we've started as an internship program. We've already got two doing it. Both of them, and this next newsletter coming out next week, you'll see interviews with them, just loving what they're doing and benefiting from it. So thank you very much for putting that together. So we do that. And then lastly, on your tables, I left you a packet of information. I also sent you an email with a link to where the data came from, because on the sheet, it's, I wouldn't want to type that web address in. It's just, it's one of those percent signs, slash, all that stuff in there. So I sent you a link in your email, but basically, this is CTE Month, and so with my other hat of the Sharaftee Director and of course, the ACC being, you know, a Siamese twin with Sharaftee in terms of what we do, I wanted to share with you those data on what happens when kids do get involved with CTE. In there, they do reference what they refer to as the CTE concentrator. That's a student who has taken two or more courses within a particular program of study, so a welder that's gone twice, or automotive kid that's taken two courses. And what you see in there is that statistically, and this has held true over the past three decades, the National Educational Longitudinal Study, and also one that's mimicked in Philadelphia, the Philadelphia Educational Longitudinal Study, both show that those kids, when they get in there, and you'll see the statistics to come up, do phenomenal, in fact, outclassing kids that don't take CTE and then go straight to college. So within eight years, you're seeing increased wage earnings for them. You see them with completion rates for educational attainment at or better than the other kids as well. So just wanted to share those with you. It's something to be very proud of with what happens in CTE. And again, in the newsletter, you'll see a few more statistics to come out with that. But other than that, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things to touch on. Doing some work, I don't think we've mentioned this before, but our current website vendor is Blackboard. Over this past year, they've been bought out by another company. So we're doing, having, been having some meetings, looking at some various options, and then scheduling some conversations with Final Site, who's the new, I guess, company that we'll be working with to make some plans for the coming year. So it looks like, just to give you a heads up, that probably within, in the next year, you'll be seeing a new-looking website. So we're kind of gearing up for what that conversion process looks like right now. So that's a big piece tied in with that, some work on planning to kind of renew the push on our mobile app, as well as, once again, testing the messaging system. All those little pieces, this kind of really ties back to what we did with the communication survey in the fall to make sure that we're keeping our parents informed and that we're doing our best job to meet their needs. So that's kind of the big process going on right now. And as Mr. Sarver already alluded to, getting all those materials ready for the Sports Complex Phase 2 groundbreaking ceremonies and all the related activities with that. That's all. Thank you.
10.1, I need a motion for an approval for the board resolution regarding repairs to the school sidewalks and athletic playing surfaces at the LP Sports Complex.
Second.
Mr. Merbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn? Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion to approve to award Coolmaster Company Incorporated, LaSalle, Illinois, a contract for the auto shop window replacement project, base bid $161,926. And the main building door replacement project, alternate bid 1, $46,274, for a total cost
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn? Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Merbo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. A motion for approval of the revised SER 3 plan, the contract with solution tree for professional learning community consultation services.
So moved.
Sarver.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Merbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need approval to increase the superintendent's SIRIT bond for Series 2023A and 2023B.
So moved.
Mr. Merbo?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion to approve the increase to treasurer's SIRIT bond for Series 2023A and 2023B.
Mrs. Alcorn? Dr. Lynch? Mr. Merbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion to approve of the following treasury SIRIT bond renewals, A, general obligation bond, general obligation Series 2016, B, general obligation Series 2017, and C, general obligation Series 2020.
So moved. Sarver.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Merbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the spring 2023 intergovernmental agreement with the City of LaSalle on the usage of Rotary Park and baseball fields.
So moved.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Merbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.8 will be tabled. 10.9, I need a motion for approval of the establishment of an activity account for the swim camp money.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Merbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the 2023-2024 district calendar.
So moved. Sarver.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Merbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the press policy issue, 110-2nd reading.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Merbo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the following resignations as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yeah.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Merbo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the following transfer as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Merbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the following appointments as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn? Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Merbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the following foster care placement, FMLA leave request as presented.
So moved. Sarver.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Merbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Yes. I need a motion for approval of permission for varsity baseball team overnight trip to Edwardsville participate in the Metro East Kickoff Invitational from March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three to March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Expenses will be funded by the Booster Club and Camp Activities Account.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Merbo?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of permission for the girls bowling team overnight trip to Peoria to participate in the sectional, February tenth, twenty-twenty-three to February eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. Expenses will be funded by the girls bowling team parents.
So moved.
Second.
They're already back.
Say no.
Mr. Merbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn? Dr. Lynch?
Yeah.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
That'd be successful for them.
Yeah.
Very successful.
Yeah.
Well, those come up so quickly, and you don't know.
Yeah. You don't know if they're going.
Don't know if they're going, plus they had to be there at seven-thirty in the morning.
Yeah.
So, they got, they got done Friday night and had to be back at seven-thirty in the morning on Saturday.
Oh, my.
So, to come all the way back, the trouble all the way back, I mean, that's just...
That's what we're doing, that's what we have this weekend in Peoria.
I need a motion to approve the request for the Key Club's annual overnight trip to Springfield from March tenth, twenty-twenty-three to March twelfth, twenty-twenty-three to attend the twenty-twenty-three District Convention Leadership Conference. The convention costs be paid by the Key Club Activity Account.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn? Dr. Lynch?
Yeah.
Mr. Merbo?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion to go to executive close session for A, appointment, employment compensation, discipline, and/or complaint against employee performance and/or dismissal of a specific employee. B, discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, whether for purpose of approval by the body of the minutes or the semi-annual review of the minutes. And C, intimate pending litigation, an open session, and possible action items to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Merbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yeah.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Okay. So Southford Township High School District 120 is back in open session. Roll call please.
Mr. Sarver?
Here.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Here.
Dr. Lynch?
Here.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Here.
Mrs. Taliani?
Here.
Mr. Ferrari?
Here.
Mr. Sparks?
Here. Okay, we need a motion from the board to approve and retain the executive closed session minutes of January 18th, 2023 regular meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for approval of the destruction of verbatim audio records from executive sessions held prior to September 1st, 2021 per the Illinois Open Meetings Act 5 ILS ILCS 120. This is the August 18th, '21 regular meeting.
So moved. Second.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for approval of FMLA request from Mr. Aaron Beal.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for the appointment of Ms. Kate Lance as interim associate principal for school safety as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yeah.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for the appointment of Mr. Jason Miller as interim dean of students as presented.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. Okay, if there's no other business tonight, we're going to entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that'll do it.